The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Ortman. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Crewson. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored Alderman from the twentieth.
President, members of the Board, we are honored today to have as our special guests, Jennifer Miles and Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board, I have as my honored guest today, Mr. Leroy Grant of AT&amp;T, the Ameren Missouri Family, and Mr. Percy Green, Jr. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
I'd like to have as my honored guest Celeste Reader from the Realtors, Gary Atten from the Painters, David Holmes from the Plumbers and Pike Fitters.
Oh.
Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to announce my special guest, Farmer Alderman, Jimmy Matthews.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today Jared Boyd, Chief of Staff and Counsel for the Treasurer's Office, and Leonard Johnson, Deputy Chief of Staff for the Treasurer's Office, welcome.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I have two honored guests this morning with Metropolitan Churches United, Metropolitan Congregation United, I'm sorry, Reverend Susan Snead and Ms. Barbara Paulus.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to welcome Luke Sappa, intern from St. Louis University, thanks.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, that wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we gather here today, February eighth, it was on this day in 1910 that the Boy Scouts were formed, and we're happy to have with us today my special guest, the first Boy Scout to join in 1910, Mr. Fred Stephan.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, I approve the minute, move to approve the minutes of the January twenty-fifth meeting.
Move by Alderman from thirteen, second, and by Alderman from twentieth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries, report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes, I have him as honor the mayor, the following correspondence. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the HIV Planning Council, the appointment of Willamina Allen, who resides at 811 South Forty-seventh Street, whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, the reappointment of Almeidra Simpson, who resides at 5231 Genevieve, and whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, the reappointment of Marshall Moss, who resides at 5822 South Grand, and whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, reappointment of Arice Williams, Jr., who resides at 3644 Natural Bridge, and whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, the reappointment of Laurie Gilden, who resides at 4124 Concordia, and whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, reappointment of Salem Phillips, who resides at 4200 Sarpy Avenue, whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, reappointment of Nathaniel Woodward, who resides at 2350 Park Avenue, whose term will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, the reappointment of Brenda Malone, who resides at 4845 Siegel Avenue, whose terms will expire on April the thirtieth, 2014, I respectfully request your approval of these appointments sincerely Francis G. Slay, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the HIV Planning Council.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would move that we approve the appointments to the HIV Planning Council.
Move by Alderman from the eighth, second, and by Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We dispense with line items seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counts, Alderman from the twentieth, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to take off Board Bill 166 Committee Substitute and move for third reading and final passage.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the Board, this is at the request of the sponsor, it was ably handled by the Alderman from the eighteenth with input from me and Alderman Villa, um, two weeks ago, and so I would renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, that we, third reading, third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 160 Committee Substitute, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderman Troop. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Conway.
Alderman Troop just came.
What is his vote? Alderman Troop. I didn't hear.
Want to pass?
Sixteen aye votes, one, um, sixteen aye votes, eight no votes, one abstained.
By your vote, you've third read and finally passed the aforementioned bill. At the request of the sponsor, we're going to move Board Bill Number 231 to third reading consent from the third reading informal calendar. Any further bills off of any of our informal counters, any further bills off of any of our informal counters? We dispense with line items ten through twelve, second reading.
Board Bill 295 Committee Substitute As Amended Sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Vacaro, Kennedy, Schmidt, Cohn, and Florida, an ordinance repealing Section One, Part eighty-six point zero four zero of Ordinance 56716 pertaining to the opening of bids which allows a local bidder to match the lowest bid when the lowest bid is from a non-local bidder, enacting a new provision on the same subject matter containing a severability clause, that's the extent of our second readings.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill 172 Committee Substitute As Amended Sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Cohn, French, Vacaro, and Ordinance amending Ordinance 68934 in establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 293 Sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any 3:00 a.m. closing permits for any currently non-licensed, currently non-3:00 a.m. licensed premises within the boundaries of the 24th Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 297 Committee Substitute Sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Alderman Kennedy, Cohn, President Reed, Troop, Flowers, Bosley, Moore, Hubbard, Davis, French, Boyd, Carter, Williamson, Vacaro, Arnoldowitz, and Howard, and ordinance repealing Ordinance 68412 pertaining to city public works projects, tax increment finance projects, and St. Louis city bonded projects containing definitions, construction, workforce development, and compliance fees, implementation and administration waivers, exceptions, non-compliance, nondiscrimination policy requirement, reporting requirements, severability clause and an effective date. Board Bill 290 Committee Substitute Sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance repealing 690016 and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the Eighteenth Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 248 Sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance amending Ordinance 67013 by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement in the Van de Venner-Vinnie Washington-Taylor redevelopment area. Board Bill 292 Committee Substitute Sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Alderman Kennedy, President Reed, Troop, Flowers, Bosley, Moore, Hubbard, Davis, French, Boyd, Williamson, Carter, Arnoldowitz, Cohn, Vacaro, and Schmidt, and ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District and St. Louis County and to expend municipal revenues for the purpose of commissioning a disparity study containing a severability clause. Board Bill 283 Sponsored by Alderwoman Crewson, Alderman Kennedy, Williamson, and Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to Central West End Historic District and having as its subject matter the boundary and regulations and standards for the Central West End Historic District and providing new standards for the Central West End Historic District. Board Bill 278 Sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance pertaining to the 4100 through 4300 Lindell Historic District, providing new standards for the 4100 through 4300 Lindell Historic District. Board Bill 270 Sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing directing the mayor and the comptroller of the city to execute a quitclaim due to KLR, K-A-T-O-L-L-C for certain city-owned property located in City Block 564 East, which property is known as 1211 North Tucker upon receipt of and in consideration the sum of $200,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 294 Sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing the Board of Public Service to enter into a cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the city to contribute funding to the commission for the installation of aesthetic lighting on the new Mississippi River Bridge containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 282 Sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2707 Rasheebak containing a severability clause. Board Bill 287 Sponsored by Alderman Wessels, an ordinance approving the petition of an owner of real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the Union Station Community Improvement District containing a severability clause. Board Bill 286 Sponsored by Alderman Wessels, an ordinance authorizing the St. Louis City Board of Election Commissioners upon approval of the Board of Investment and Apportionment to expend any funds received by the City Board of Election Commissioners for the voting system grant for the assistance in meeting and maintaining Title III requirements listed in the HAVA public law from the MCVR Voter List Efficiency Grant for assistance in approving and utilizing the Missouri centralized voter registration system to fulfill the obligation of said grants and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 288 Sponsored by Alderman Wessels, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperation agreement and authorizing reimbursement in accordance therewith and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 273 Sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the G Local Commercial and Office District for 1523, 1525, and 1529 Bacon containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 296 Sponsored by Alderman Moore and Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance directing the director of streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Van de Venner Spur at the North Curb Line of Dr. Martin Luther King and on the South Curb Line of East West Alleyway between Dr. Martin Luther King and Aldine and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 274 Sponsored by Alderman Cohn, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderman Ortman, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission pertaining to the zoning code containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 291 Sponsored by Alderman Villa, an ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as the Conda Let Coke Redevelopment Area pursuant to Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act containing a severability clause. Board Bill 211 Sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2130 California. Board Bill 212 Sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, an ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 2723 Russell. Board Bill 241 Sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2912 Shenandoah. Board Bill 253 Sponsored by Alderman Ortman, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2910 Indiana containing a severability clause. Board Bill 272 Sponsored by Alderman Ortman, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2621 through 23 South Eleventh Street containing a severability clause. Board Bill 267 Sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4954 Chippewa. Board Bill 268 Sponsored by Alderwoman Young, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2325 and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 266 Sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4274 Flat containing a severability clause. Board Bill 269 Sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4136 through 38 Flat containing a severability clause. Board Bill 271 Sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4251 through 53 Russell containing a severability clause. Board Bill 254 Sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3612 through 14 Hartford. Board Bill 279 Sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3530 Utah containing a severability clause, that's the extent of perfection consent.
At the request of Alderman from the twenty-second, could you meet, move Board Bill 172 Committee Substitute As Amended to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
To the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the, from the thirteenth, you recognize on the mo, on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eleventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 275 Committee Substitute Sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Alderman Cohn, Arnoldowitz, Young, Ogilvy, Kennedy, French, Flowers, and Davis, and ordinance making it unlawful to possess marijuana containing a severability clause, a penalty clause, and an effective date clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 275 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill 275.
Move by Alderman from the, from the twenty-fifth, entertain the second on him. Second by Alderman from the second, Alderman, please proceed.
Uh, Mr. President, I would also like to move to introduce Board Bill 275 Floor
Been moved that we introduce Board Bill 275 Floor Substitute, is it on everyone's desk?
It is, Mr. President.
It's been moved, I'll entertain the second, second by Alderman from the second.
Uh, Mr. President, uh...
All in favor, Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Troop. I didn't hear you. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida.
Just for the introduction of the floor substitute.
Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Florida. Alderman French. Twenty-two aye votes, three no votes, one present.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, Board Bill 275 Floor Substitute is an amended version of the committee substitute. The committee substitute passed out of the Health Committee unanimously last week, and prior to being introduced to the Health Committee, you know, we had had conversations with the City Council's Office, the Police Department, and the Circuit Attorney's Office, but there had been some changes that were made in the committee sub that, you know, after passing out a committee, the Circuit Attorney's Office had some concerns with some of the language that was in the bill, and so we got together with the City Council's Office and with the Circuit Attorney's Office to make those revisions, and so those are reflected in today's board bill. This board bill was initially intended to basically address some of the concerns within our judicial system and also, you know, bring to light some of the unreasonable punishments that are mandated within our criminal justice system as it relates to certain types of possession of controlled substances, and so, um, at the end of the day, this bill is not, as it has been characterized, the legalization or the decriminalization of marijuana, in fact, uh, you know, there is the possibility that there will be more municipal charges that are issued to, uh, to people, you know, in the city of St. Louis as a result of this bill, um, but the fact of the matter is, is that right now, you know, per the testimony of the Circuit Attorney's Office, there are about two to three hundred cases a year that could be referred over to our municipal court system and therefore alleviating the burden upon our police department and also our prosecutorial resources, and so, um, what this bill does is essentially creates a, you know, an air of fairness to our citizens in the city of St. Louis, it also provides efficiency within our government, which are both good things, and, uh, you know, also one of the amendments that was added into the bill and committee per the request of the Chair of the Committee, which I wholeheartedly support, is within the penalty clause, it does provide for a portion of the fines that are collected to go to the Mental Health Board for substance abuse prevention, awareness, and treatment programs which are already in place over at the Mental Health Board as well, so, you know, with that, I ask for favorable consideration to this bill, and I move to perfect Board Bill 275 Floor Substitute.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the twentieth? Any further, which one, twenty-four? Didn't see you over the twenty-fourth, Alderman from the eighth, any...
Morning again, Mr. President, um, I do support this floor substitute and this bill, and I'll expound it a little bit because I don't want people to misinterpret what we've done, we have not legalized marijuana in the city of St. Louis. As a matter of fact, in many cases, we facilitated being able to bring charges against people in possession of smaller amounts of marijuana. Historically, what would happen is if the police pulled you over, you had a small amount of marijuana, but they're busy, it's Friday night in the Eighth Ward, a lot going on, uh, they have to make a decision, do we charge you, which means I gotta haul you down to Third District, spend, take two hours off my shift, write you up, document the evidence, and then, you know, place you in custody or let you postpone or let you go into recognizance, but the small amounts of marijuana were always a street call by the police officer, and it was, uh, the Alderman from the twentieth, they said deficiency, we're taking a lot of people off of the street to prosecute them as state charges, um, whereas under this ordinance, the police officer will stop you, you know, and as long as, you know, and this is what I tell all my sixteen and seventeen-year-old clients, as long as you don't give the cop a whole raft of junk and yap, yell, and yak at him, they'll give you a summons on the spot, you go on your way, the police officer takes it and gets processed, and you would get a court date. So, a couple of things, things are happening here is, it does accommodate those people that have a small amount of marijuana, actually, I believe more people will be charged with possession because it won't be taking such a large drain on our police officers' time, and it would also give us an opportunity as society to address the young people, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, at least in some fashion, to get them before the official agency, give them some choices, you know, to go to a SATOP class or to get drug rehab, you know, we can intervene, this is an opportunity for us as society to intervene, bring the people in front of the court, a judge, have them understand that, you know, this is serious business, you're gonna make this decision, how it may or may not impact your life and on a going-forward basis, so, I, I think it gives us an opportunity to intervene earlier, it will lessen our resources, it does not decriminalize really in any sense our legalized marijuana usage in the city of St. Louis, it will, I think, give us an opportunity, and as the courts get better, to address it at an earlier age with the younger people. The older people, you know, someone forty or fifty years old, you can't do anything or change their ways, um, in life, I just don't think you can, but we've all seen the ravages of alcohol and drug abuse, um, on people, young people, families, friends, relatives, um, and it is a significant, serious problem, and then for you young people, you know, I would say this, just because this is an ordinance violation, this doesn't mean you get off scot-free the rest of your life, this will be on your record, and when someone does do a background check on you, we will find this out. And... do a background check on you, we will find this out. And irregardless of what you think as a nineteen or a twenty-year-old that it's cool or that's the way society's going, remember, it's gonna be some old people, like a bunch of Aldermen, are the ones that are gonna decide to hire you in the future. And if they see this, this may adversely impact you. So, it isn't, you know, open the floodgates that you can do this wherever, whenever you want, and it still has consequences on your life. Just as any posting you might do on Twitter or Facebook, that will always be there and come and get you. This is not a panacea for people who just wanna openly use drug use. As a matter of fact, I envision we'll have the opportunity to charge more people, but as an ordinance violation instead of a state misdemeanor charge, which is a significant charge on a state basis, on a going-forward basis. And I would just tell, say to young people, be careful, watch what you do, be nice to the cops, don't give them a hard time. They're way smarter than you, and they busted a thousand smart-mouthed punks like you. Be, lie to our police, take your ticket, move on, consult with your parents, consult with the court, and make a determination, do you really wanna do this? And I think that's the great thing about this bill is we're not gonna force the decision on forcing you to the state court where you're gonna have to get a more expensive lawyer. It'd be a way more indelible mark on your record. And it will be hard for you to overcome that. Give you an opportunity at an earlier age to be punished. And I know in some areas in the city, you know, we have people that are openly smoking pot on our corners, and a couple of my colleagues have told me that. And, you know, the police, what are they gonna do? You got one joint on you, what's the police officer's decision there? And his decision is, is to take two hours off of his street patrol when we do have serious crimes that can happen, are happening in the city of St. Louis, to prosecute you and start that process, or give you a summons and move on, and give you an opportunity to go to court, or blow off court, and have a bench warrant put out for you. So, I think this is a good bill. I am comfortable with it. I have a seventeen-year-old son, you know, he thinks in his mind, from what his friends are saying, we're legalizing it. And I'm telling Nick and his friends, we're not legalizing it. It will give us an opportunity to issue the citations, bring these young people forward at an earlier age. And so, I think this bill accomplishes a lot, and I just think there's been so many misperceptions about what this bill does about legalizing marijuana use, and it does not do that. Thank you.
Think Alderman from the 4th may have been up first, and then Alderman from the 12th after that, I think.
Members of the board, I rise in opposition of this bill. I think this is a slick, sleazy way of sliding under the radar to relax the marijuana laws, and eventually, it'll become a law that we don't have to have. We can legalize marijuana. I think that, what are we gonna do about the drug dealer who's selling the marijuana? The guy that sells it? And what we should really do is relax the laws of crack cocaine versus powder cocaine. That's what we should do. If we're gonna do the marijuana, we're gonna relax the laws on marijuana, then we should relax the laws on the crack compared to powder cocaine because a lot of people are getting locked up unnecessarily. I know we need police officers in our community. I have six guarding my entire ward during the day and three at night. And I think it's terrible. They need to be doing something else besides locking up people with small marijuana possessions. But the idea that you're giving this young man or old man the right to have some marijuana is bringing in, and eventually, it'll be all marijuana. So, I think this is just a way of relaxing the laws. There's a lot I can say. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think it's a slick way of sliding under the radar to eventually legalize marijuana in this town, and I want no marijuana at all. And it's called chronic. Thank you.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I just wanted to say that I am supportive of the committee substituting this bill. And if you really think about it, what we're doing now is basically doing the same thing they've been doing in St. Louis County for over twenty years, writing, issuing tickets with a court date. And so, the Alderman from the 4th knows that it's not a slick way. They're not gonna legalize it. It is still illegal. Crack cocaine and other drugs is something totally different. When people smoke marijuana, two things happen. You're gonna go to the store with the munchies and buy ding-dongs, or you're gonna be in a happy mood, and they're not gonna burglarize your house because it's a lot, it's a lot cheaper and funner. But I'm just saying, I rise in support of this committee substituting bill. Like I say, it's just bringing us in line with what they've been doing in St. Louis County for the last twenty years. I think it's a good bill for the city. It frees up the state court, and it helps, you know, maybe someone who does get stopped, and they know, just because you get a ticket, you can still go to jail, you know, depending if run any warrants or things like that. But it's a good start. It's coming in line with St. Louis County, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 13th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the sponsor to yield.
Alderman from the 25th, will you yield for question to the Alderman from the 13th?
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 13th, please proceed.
Thank you. The, I just, a point of clarification. The bill on page one says that the message of this ordinance is that people should not use marijuana, but also should not lose opportunities for education and employment because of such use. You know, to me, that implies that this, you know, this is not gonna be, this is not gonna be part of their permanent record. You know, the Alderman from the 8th Ward reminded me of my high school principal when he kept saying, "This is part of your, gonna be part of your permanent record. It'll follow you throughout your life." Which is?
Well, so, first and foremost, you know, I guess personally, you know, I have never used marijuana. I've never even smoked a cigarette in my life.
Why not?
So, why not? Because it's not healthy for you. So, you know, so, from a personal perspective, you know, my philosophy is always just say no, you know, especially for youth that are developing, their brains are developing, their bodies are developing. There's a lot of, you know, stuff emotional, you know, you know, they're all, every part of their, you know, being is developing. And so, you know, using mind-altering substances is not something, or any type of addictive substance, whether that's alcohol, or cigarettes, or, you know, marijuana, or any other, you know, controlled substance, you know, it's not something that I condone, especially for young people. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, for first-time offenders, and that's really what this bill addresses, you know, because when you look in the exception clauses, as to where, you know, folks would be referred to a city court versus a state court, you know, folks who are felons, folks who have multiple misdemeanor marijuana possession charges, you know, folks that have been arrested on any other type of felony or misdemeanor, they'll still be charged for that, you know, additional misdemeanor or felony charge. So, what this is addressing is really those first-time offenders. And so, instead of, you know, subjecting someone to, as our colleague from the 8th Ward mentioned, more expensive attorneys, a more time-intensive process, and, you know, using up our prosecutorial resources and our police resources to do that, but also having a charge on their criminal history that reflects a much more egregious situation, it will refer them to a municipal court, they'll get a municipal violation, and also, you know, within our municipal court system, you know, one, because of our city charter, our city charter doesn't allow us to fine any more than $500 per incident on any type of, you know, situation, you know, whereas underneath state statute, they're allowed to be fined a great deal more. And, you know, it's just a more time-intensive process. So, you know, and also with this, there's, you know, a kind of a presumption that we would like for them to do community service work and/or, you know, have a suspended imposition of service. And so, again, these are for your first-time offenders, and we're leaving some latitude up to the judicial system that actually decides what someone's sentence is going to be. But at the end of the day, you know, it'll be a much more fair process for someone who is a first-time, you know, offender, not someone who's doing this on a repetitive basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Board Bill 275 committee substitute?
Floor substitute.
Floor substitute. Alderman from the 20th.
Members of the board, with the sponsor, may I ask if the sponsor would yield, please?
Will the sponsor yield?
Yes, Madam Vice President.
Alderman, if you were pulled over right now and had under thirty-five grams of marijuana in your car, could the police officer issue you a ticket currently?
So, yes, they could. But there's also other circumstances in a situation like that, which the police testified in the last Health Committee hearing, and that, you know, the officers always have the ability to judge who's also underneath the influence. And so, driving underneath the influence is another thing that is not condoned by this bill. And so, you know, if there is someone who's found in possession of marijuana, they still run the risk of, you know, being charged with another, you know, misdemeanor charge or felony charge, you know, which is, you know, DUI, so.
So, if you're pulled over today, Alderman, is it your testimony that if you have under thirty-five grams of marijuana, you could be issued a ticket by the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, and your answer to that is yes, of course, because it is?
Yes.
And there is a charge code, which I sent to you, that the sergeant was good enough to provide for us.
Thank you.
And it indicates that, and that is the current law. So, you know, basically, it's felt very Orwellian to me lately, for a whole lot of reasons. But on this bill in particular, Orwellian, because it seems like we're saying war is peace and up is down. And, you know, I just heard an Alderman say after, you know, we've been talking about this for three weeks when we had Normal down here, the National Organization for Reform of Marijuana Laws, who believed that this was gonna legalize marijuana. And now, we have an Alderman on these floors that are saying that we're gonna issue more tickets, and so, we're gonna prosecute more on the marijuana laws. So, it's created great confusion, and it may have been the effort of the Alderman from the 25th to bring some additional clarity to the issue. But I think that at least it seems like there's some people who are the law and order folks, we've heard some of that today, who believe that this is a wrong move because somehow we're legalizing marijuana. Then we are, yes. And then, we have the people on the other side that think we're legalizing marijuana, and then we've got other people who are saying that we're somehow going to be enforcing this more greatly. The reality is that currently, currently, if you have under thirty-five grams of marijuana in the city of St. Louis, you can be pulled over and issued a ticket. And yes, all the other stuff that the Alderman said in terms of being under the influence is also currently under our law, and you can be prosecuted for that. And this body, of course, cannot tell the police department not to enforce state law. And of course, the floor substitute does not tell them that, although earlier versions of this bill did do that, and that was one of my concerns. Some of the voters may remember that recently, we voted with regard to local control of the police department, and that's under Chapter 84 of the statutes of Missouri. And that specifically says that public officials, because they were concerned that we as a board might do that, may not impede, obstruct, hinder, or otherwise interfere with a member of a municipal police force established under these sections in performance of his or her job duties. And it goes on from there. So, basically, what we're doing is a smokescreen or something today. I'm not sure exactly what we're doing. I know that we claim, at the end of the day, that we're gonna take more monies that would otherwise go a hundred percent to the courts for enforcement of justice, that all of those fines would go into the courts. We are saying, and I'm not sure that we can do this because we haven't overturned Hancock, that somehow, we're gonna take a percentage of those to give them to a very worthy cause, which is for mental health. So, that sounds like a good thing, but I'm not sure whether or not we can do that, and whether, in fact, there will be money left over since those fees that are attached are supposed to be for the actual cost of the administration of justice. So, again, at the end of the day, I am not sure what we have done here other than to indicate in precatory language and to have additional discussion, which is always a good thing, to have additional discussion, that we agree with the current law. And we are suggesting to the police department that they go after the more serious, higher amounts of possession, which is a good thing, which they can already do. So, I'm not sure why we have this legislation. I think it just reaffirms, we could've just said that we are reaffirming the code sections 11.60200 to .270, which already have a charge code by the city police department, and that we're gonna move forward. I assume that because this is the same as current law, that the police department doesn't have any concerns about it. But then, I'm hearing from other folks that it sounds like that we're gonna have additional charges for marijuana. So, less is more, more is less, up is down, war is peace, and legalization is now greater prosecution.
Thank you. Further discussion on Board Bill 275 floor substitute? Alderman Villa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, speak briefly against the adoption of the floor substitute. Mr. President, of all the things we can dabble with, as we're running out of time in this particular Aldermanic session, I don't think this is it. I don't know whether or not marijuana is legal or illegal, and I know I've just been told that it is not legal, but a small amount of it isn't quite as bad as a bigger amount of it. The fact of the matter is, I don't think this issue is the one that is bogging down our courts. And I don't think this is a red-hot issue that when the police pulls somebody over, they probably say a "Shard Hail Mary and Our Father," that that's all they have in the trunk of the car is, however many ounces this is. I don't know why we're doing this. I don't know why, at this particular time, we're dabbling in this realm. I really, really, really dislike, whereas the message of this ordinance is that people should not use marijuana, but should not lose opportunities for education and employment. I mean, once again, the guy speeding down Highway 70 in a car with expired license plates, he's probably not gonna read this, and we forgot to tell him that he shouldn't eat jelly doughnuts. They're not good for him either. I just don't know where this gets us, and if you think I'm half-nuts, I tried very unsuccessfully to pass three years in a row a medical marijuana law in this state that was drawn so tightly that it actually, I thought, made good sense. I couldn't get that out of committee. It's probably because of inability to know the structure in Jefferson City. But I don't, I am not an attorney. I just don't know that why this is before us, other than it certainly, it's cute, it's topical, but I don't know that it improves anything. So, I plan to vote against the adoption of the floor substitute. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion of Board Bill 275 floor substitute? The, yes, Alderman from the 19th Ward.
Thank you. This is one of those things that, you know, we can be as particular as we want to be, but at the end of the day, when our court system comes to us and says, "Help us help you so we can spend more time on the more serious crimes that come before you." So, it's just the difference between you getting a ticket for parking meter versus a speeding ticket. That's the difference in this process at this point for this bill. So, at the end of the day, all other triggers will still happen if that person is a felon, if they're caring enough for distribution, if they've been caught more than once. All kinds of other triggers are there. So, we're still gonna deal with it as a criminal issue. It's just that it's, we're gonna deal with it in a more efficient way and still take care of the problem of educating and getting more people to understand the problem with using drugs. So, I do support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion of this board bill. Alderman from the 11th Ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly to inquire, the Alderman from the 25th.
Yes.
Yes.
Gentlemen, did the courts come to you with this?
Actually, my first initial meeting relative to this particular board bill was in a shared meeting with a representative from the Circuit Attorney's Office, the City Council's Office, and the Police Department. So, not So, not the courts, but the prosecutorial resources for the city, yes.
That's good enough. I mean, I'm looking for some, and they saw it as a fairly major problem.
They view it as an opportunity to help create efficiency within our system, yes. So, and it does make an impact for the two to three hundred people who would be referred over to the municipal courts, per the testimony of the Assistant Circuit Attorney.
Again, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Again, Mr. President, I am just a little bit confused, because this particular substance is either legal or it's not legal. And if it's illegal, I don't think the police need to be carrying around, you know, scales where they can raise, you know, weigh their basil if they're making ravioli, and get out and weigh whatever amount of marijuana is in the car. I kind of think it's a supercilious realm unless we're really going to do something. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussions on this board bill?
I read my motion.
Sponsor is recognized to close.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. You know, again, this board bill does not legalize, so I know there's a lot of confusion as to legalization, decriminalization, and et cetera. It is a municipal violation, and so, it is an infraction of the law. The matter before us is to help gain efficiency, and actually, it does make a difference, you know, and I guess, you know, as some of my colleagues have pointed out, you know, there seems to be a conflict between, you know, not condoning the usage, and also providing for, you know, someone flying seventy miles an hour down the highway with, you know, the intent to deal. This board bill does address those situations, and it does not allow for that type of behavior in our city. What this allows is for people who, you know, might be a first- or second-time offender to have a little bit more humane process to go through, and, you know, address their concern, and not punishing them for the rest of their life. That's a huge deal. And so, at the end of the day, it's still illegal, you know, it's still a city ordinance violation, it'll still be prosecuted, it'll still be adjudicated, one way or another, and, you know, folks will have their day in court, you know, and so, but at the end of the day, you know, what this does is it provides for additional police and prosecutorial resources to deal with more egregious situations, as our, you know, we've noticed in our city. In my ward alone, I've had three murders in this last month. You know, that is a huge amount of work for our police department, a huge amount of work. And so, you know, when we're talking about two to three hundred cases, and you're talking about basically a mandatory five hours of police overtime, just sitting in a courtroom, that's not including court continuances, that's not including, you know, having their drive time and everything else, when they actually arrest and process these folks, and take them out of our districts and off of our streets, to, you know, basically do something that can be handled by our municipal court system. And so, you know, this essentially provides the opportunity to codify a policy that's pretty much in place already within the department. So, you know, it essentially outlines and provides a policy for the city and for our police department, and it provides a more humane treatment for our citizens, and also it provides efficiency in our government, and it's a good thing, you know, in my opinion. It's, you know, considered a good thing by the city councilor's office, the circuit attorney's office, and the police department. So, again, I rise in favor of this bill, and I ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of Board Bill two seventy-five, floor substitute? Aye opposed, no? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup? Alderman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Young? Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman? Alderman Vollmer? Alderman Villa? Alderman Arnoldowitz? Alderman Wessels? Alderman Howard? Alderman Florida? Alderman Behringer? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman French? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaccaro? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Cohn? Alderman Williamson? Alderman Carter? Alderman Cruzen? President Reed? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Young? President Reed? Eighteen a-votes, six no-votes, one present.
By your vote, you have perfected Board Bill two seventy-five, floor substitute.
Board Bill one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth ward.
Sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Cohn, French, and Vaccaro, and ordinance amending ordinance six eight nine three four, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials, and containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth ward.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Board Bill one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended, is a bill that expands... I'm sorry. Thank you. I knew that we perfect Board Bill one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended.
Show a second. There is a motion and a second to pass Board, but one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended. Sponsor may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, or thank you, Mr. Speaker. Board Bill one seventy-two expands upon our current financial conflict of interest disclosure rules. So, this is something that's on the books now, where we, as members of the Board of Aldermen, have to disclose if certain family members have a financial interest in legislation. And what the bill does is it expands the family members to include brothers, sisters, parents, or spouses' parents, and domestic partners. What is in the law now is currently just spouse and dependent children, and if you look at what other municipalities have done, is they've included a bigger group of people than we currently include. So, St. Louis County, their rule is very much like the proposed rule here. Kansas City, their rule is very much like the proposed rule here, and a variety of other cities in Missouri and across the country have similar types of rules. So, what, the idea of this bill is to get us from a rule that is kind of at the back of the pack in terms of disclosure, and get us maybe to the middle of the pack, so that what we're doing is at least comparable to what many other municipalities are doing. And the idea, in a nutshell, is just to ensure for the public that when there is a conflict, that conflict is disclosed. All it says is that we, as members of the Board of Aldermen, have to disclose these financial conflicts of interest to the clerk, the clerk keeps a record of them, and then, it's possible for that member to vote on that bill, introduce that bill, discuss that bill, or if they choose to not disclose a financial conflict of interest, then they abstain from doing those things. So, with that, I renew my motion to, unless there's discussion.
Yes. Alderman from the seventeenth ward.
Yes, Mr. President, I was wondering if the Alderman from the twenty-fourth would yield?
Alderman, will you yield to the Alderman from the seventeenth ward?
I will.
Yes, proceed.
I'm sorry, Alderman, I really don't know you or your family very well. Do you have any sisters or brothers?
I do.
And are you married and you have in-laws?
I do.
Then, are you familiar, I mean, when you get together with your family, do they share their personal financial information with you? I mean, like, when you got married, did your in-laws come in and show you what they have in their investment accounts, or their 401K accounts, or?
Right, of course not.
Okay. I don't think that's unusual, and I guess that's the problem I have with this bill. I actually voted for it, I raised some of the concerns at the committee, I voted for it coming out of committee, but then, I began reflecting on it. And, you know, my problem is, is as elected officials, we are constantly put in a position of being under the microscope, and, you know, I'm going to admit it down here, you know, when I was a young Alderman, I goofed up one year, and I forgot to pay my personal property tax on time. I caught it, and I paid for it, and I think I've been current every year since then, but we make mistakes, just like anybody else, whether it's forgetting to pay a bill every now and then, or a tax bill, or something like that, it happens. Not so long ago, they ran a thing on the paper about red light cameras, and how some people weren't paying the red light cameras, or every couple of years, there's, you know, an expose about somebody who forgot to pay parking tickets, or whatever. And we come down here, and this ethics stuff is really important, but it is just so hard to go ahead and draft legislation to regulate it in a meaningful way that people can clearly understand and live up to. And we have a couple of different pieces of it, it seems like every couple of years, we do something. A few years ago, I guess, somebody got elected, and they didn't pay their personal property taxes, and so, now, I think if, you can't, you can't take office if your personal property taxes aren't paid, you can't, what's the other one that we had? When the casinos were down here, we passed some legislation to prohibit campaign contributions from casinos, so I got that bouncing around in the back of my head. And then, we have issues about fines from campaign, if the Missouri Ethics Commission fines us, we can't take office, and, which, all this stuff is good, it's just like, the detail, you know, every time something comes up, we try to legislate it, and in this case, we vote on stuff down here all the time, and I mean, we don't have them as thick as we used to, but, you know, we get a stack of bills down here, and, you know, I don't read all those things, and I don't sit in on all the committee hearings, and I don't know who all's getting contracts, and if a client of mine has a contract or something. But I'll give you an example, I think we're voting on something from Ameren Ue right now. Ameren Ue is a publicly traded company. Somebody, one of your relatives, your brother's sister's parents, or spouse's parents, happen to own ten thousand dollars worth of Ameren Ue stock, you're in violation of this ordinance. So, are we all going to run home now and call up our in-laws and ask them if it's okay to buy, you know, do you own Ameren Ue stock? Because if you own ten thousand dollars worth of Ameren Ue stock, and you're my in-law, who probably isn't going to share your personal financial information with me, I would be technically, you know, in violation of this ordinance, if I voted for that. And we vote on stuff with AT&amp;T, and we vote on all kinds of stuff down here, and I have trouble figuring out my personal conflicts of interest, and we begin expanding that to brothers and sisters and parents and spouses, and you include things like publicly traded stocks and stuff like that, are, whether or not they receive five thousand dollars a year under remuneration? I mean, if I have a relative that's working for a company that's doing business with the city, and that company, oh, yeah, that company has a contract with his company that's doing over five thousand dollars of business, then I'm in conflict. You know, this is just, it's going to set us all up to be criminals, and we won't even know about it. And, but someday, some newspaper reporter will go down and find out, you know, that we are in conflict with this, and suddenly, somehow or another, we're all going to end up being embarrassed, and I just, you know, some of these ethic rules, they're important, and I understand what they're trying to do, and I generally support them, but, you know, knowing what my spouse's parents or my brothers and sisters own, or who they're doing business with, is just completely beyond comprehension, as far as I'm concerned. So, I, you know, I'm going to reluctantly vote against this today, and that's my reason why.
Further discussion on Board Bill one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended? Yes, Alderman Trup?
Yes, my inquiry, sponsor of the bill.
You want to ask a sponsor to yield? Yes.
Yes.
Proceed.
Alderman, what, I was reading your bill, and it's kind of interesting. What is, while you introducing this bill, what has happened to you since you've been here to cause you to want to introduce a bill like this? Give me a situation that have occurred that you know of.
Well, right now, right now, we are an island of, there's an island, city of St. Louis is an island where we require less disclosure than the areas around us require. And my personal feeling is that it is, it's important to, it's important for the public. It helps us do our job better, when we have the trust of the public. I think that's important. And when we notice that, you know, maybe we're ten or twenty years behind on this conflict of interest disclosure, I think it's time to update that. And I, you know, I think that, I think in committee, the Alderman from the seventeenth made a good point about, you know, maybe we should have a summary of some of these things that the clerk maintains, that the city councilor's office maintains, that we give to people on an annual basis, or a biannual basis, just to make sure that we're all aware of what are the, what all the rules are. I mean, I would certainly support that, and maybe it's an oversight that we're not doing that right now.
So, what, so that nothing had happened to you, or you have seen or witnessed anything that would justify your introducing this legislation?
It entertains me sometimes to read the laws we have on the books, and just, you know, see where they are.
But, you know, I guess, when you were sworn in, do you remember the language that was encompassed in that process?
The language of the swearing in?
Yes.
No, I don't.
When you took your oath of office, you remember what you said?
Not verbatim, no.
Well, I think if you go back and kind of remember and read it, you will find that much of what you're saying, and much of what you're trying to do, you've already taken an oath of office to say that you would not do that. And if I'm understanding your bill, it might have something, I just don't, I don't, when I read it, I don't know why I would want to do this, what you have here, to me. And I want to know why you want to do it to you, and that's why I asked a question that I don't think you have answered. And unless you can answer that question, I don't see why anybody in this room would vote for this bill. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman from the twenty-second ward.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I think the Alderman from the seventeenth made a compelling case for why this bill is a very important piece of legislation, that we should really think about and consider, and make sure that we're doing something in the best interest of all of us. And I would like to make a motion to send this back to committee, to be brought up at a later date.
There's a motion and a second to send this bill, Board Bill one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended, back to committee. There's a second, second by Alderman from the nineteenth ward. That is non-debatable motion, all those who are voting now to send Board Bill one seventy-two, committee substitute as amended, back to committee. back to committee.
Mr. Speaker, request a roll call vote.
Pardon?
Request a roll call vote on that motion.
All those in favor, aye, opposed, no. The clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Was that aye? Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman.
No.
Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels.
No.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Is that aye? Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
No.
Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Was that aye? President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Cohn. No. Alderwoman Flowers changed her vote from a no vote to an aye vote. Fifteen aye votes, nine no votes, one present.
By your vote, you have sent Board Bill 275, floor substitute back to committee.
272. 172.
I'm sorry, 172, Committee Substitute As Amended, back to committee. Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill 218, Committee Substitute.
Okay. Alderman from the 22nd Ward, you're recognized to, for a suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of placing the following board bills on the third reading consent calendar. Board Bills 293, 297, Committee Substitute, 290, Committee Substitute, 248, 292, Committee Substitute, 283, 278, 270, 294, 282, 287, 286, 273, 296, 274, 291, 211, 212, 241, 253, 272, 267, 268, 266, 269, 271, 254, and 279.
There's a second, motion, a second, to suspend the rules to bring the bills identified by the Alderman 22nd Ward down for, to place them under third reading consent calendar. All those in favor, aye, opposed, no. The clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. I didn't hear you. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Cohn. President Reed. Twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote, you have, by your vote, you approved the amendment of the motion of the Alderman from the 22nd Ward. Board, third reading consent calendar.
Board Bills. 218, Committee Substitute, 246, 265, 103, 239, 260, 285, 284, 289, 193, I mean, I'm sorry, 293, 297, Committee Substitute, 290, Committee Substitute, 248, 292, Committee Substitute, 283, 278, 270, 294, 282, 287, 286, 273, 296, 274, 291, 211, 212, 241, 253, 272, 24, 267, 268, 266, 269, 271, 254, and 279.
All right, everybody got that? Alderman from the 17th Ward, you're recognized on the consent motion. You got a motion to, on the third reading consent calendar.
Approve the third reading consent calendar.
This is the assistant majority floor leader, folks. Alderman from the 17th Ward.
Obviously, I don't get a very frequent opportunity to practice my craft here, so I appreciate the opportunity today.
The, okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Yes, Alderman from the 20th Ward. All those in favor, aye. Would the clerk, please, call a roll.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Young. President Reed. Twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote, you have approved the third reading consent calendar. Third, report of the enrollment committee.
Board Bills. 218, Committee Substitute, 246, 265, 103, 239, 260, 285, 284, 289, 160, Committee Substitute, 293, 297, Committee Substitute, 290, Committee Substitute, 248, 292, Committee Substitute, 283, 278, 270, 294, 282, 287, 286, 273, 296, 274, 291, 211, 212, 241, 253, 272, 267, 268, 266, 269, 271, 254, and 279.
All right. All other business being suspended, the President will, in open session, affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Hey, could we just pass 38 bills? It seemed like it was more to me. Let's, we have a motion on the courtesy resolution consent calendar. There's a motion, a second, to pass the courtesy resolution consent calendar. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? The courtesy resolution consent calendar passes. First reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Miscellaneous, unfulfilled, unfinished business.
We have none.